Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started. Everybody can take a seat. Hi. We'll just wait for these last few people to sign up to speak and start the meeting. All right, well, we can get started. Good evening. Welcome to the January Hoboken Board of Education Meeting. Before we get started, I just want to make an announcement about masks. Just wanted to remind everyone that per the governor's mandate and a notice from our executive county superintendent, everyone present at a public board meeting must keep their mask on at all times. And with that being said, the Hoboken Board of Education respects the opinions of all attendees. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10 colon 4 dash 6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in local newspapers on January 8, 2022, which was the annual notice. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phone, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatori. Ms. Delira.
Here.
Mr. Delatorre.
Here.
Ms. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Cluffel.
Ms. McGurk.
Ms. Simons.
Ms. Takarian.
Here.
Ms. Angley.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Katamatori.
Good evening. Before we begin, we'd like to remind everyone in attendance tonight that this is a regular board meeting with student recognitions, as well as students from our high school media program working the equipment, and our staff and faculty also in attendance and working the equipment for the meeting. We ask that your comments be respectful, no matter your views inconsistent with the decorum with which we attempt to run our meetings. Also, this is not a hearing, nor is it a back and forth discussion with any speaker. Your comments will be entered into the record of this meeting, and questions will be added to the FAQ section of our district website as appropriate. We may correct misinformation or facts, on facts or make comments where appropriate, but there is no engagement and debate with the public at any of our board meetings. Sheila Delara will be interrupting at 30 seconds from the end of your allotted five minutes of speaking time, and please note that the referendum is not an agenda item tonight. So if you are speaking on the referendum, please make sure you've signed up on the sheet for public comment on non-agenda items. Finally, because of last time, if you would like to speak to us, please do not come up on the stage. We can talk when we take a break and are happy to entertain your discussions then.
Thank you. So at this time, we will move to the recognition portion of our meeting. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, our Assistant Superintendent.
Some of my friends are in the front row. Good evening, members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students and their support team, the families who are joining us at tonight's meeting. It is my honor to address you today and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium to celebrate and share detailed information and anecdotes about why these students are being honored here this evening. They have truly excelled and remained their most focus. Tonight, we acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of these fantastic five students. Excellence, as you know, does not just happen. It is born from repeated attempts and an unrelenting spirit. Our students embody that, and we are very proud of them. As is always our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brand School and its principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection at the podium and then, of course, pose for pictures. He will then introduce the Connors principal, Ms. Addy, and she will follow the same pattern introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Mara, and Picapeietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School respectively. Thank you for your attention this evening, and with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to join me at the podium.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'd like to ask Lexi Roth to come and join me at the podium. Congratulations to Lexi Roth, the Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month for December 2021. Lexi was nominated by her third grade teacher, Ms. James. Ms. James said, "Over the past few weeks, Lexi has shown an admirable amount of perseverance and growth in working towards third grade skills and concepts. Initially, the jump to second grade to third was a bit overwhelming for her. However, with a little push from her mom and me, Lexi has shown everyone the greatness she is capable of. Lexi's participation and effort went through the roof. Her hand flies up to participate in all subjects, and she is doing her best work in all areas. Lexi is focused, hardworking, and truly takes the time to give each assignment her all." Ms. James went on to say, "Lexi, I am so proud of you. Not only are you hardworking and show a great deal of perseverance, but you have the amazing qualities of being a caring and respectful kid. You make me smile every time you lend a helping hand, whether to me or a friend in class. Keep working just as hard, Lex. You are so deserving of this award." I couldn't agree more. Lexi's first year at Brand happened to be my first year there as principal. Since then, she's always quick to greet me whenever I see her around the school. Her kindness, her great personality, and her excellent fashion sense are on display every day. In addition to helping Ms. James, she is always quick to lend a hand or kind word to her friends and peers, and she always brightens my day any chance I get to speak with her. When a few of her peers were asked why they felt Lexi was deserving of this honor, responses included the following. Lila shared, "Lexi's handwriting has improved so much, and she is always so focused." And Amanda shared, "Lexi is very nice and very helpful." I can say with confidence that Lexi demonstrates multiple qualities that exhibit why she is an asset to our school. Lexi continuously displays a positive and cheerful disposition. She is super polite and caring, and you can always hear her using manners, whether it is to say thank you to someone helping her or checking on someone who seems upset or like they're struggling. She is an exemplary student and learner and an overall great person. Lexi is a very active participant in the Hoboken community. Outside of school, Lexi loves to wrestle, play flag football, surf, do taekwondo, and still squeezes in time to read tons of books. Her favorite subject in school is history, and she plans to go to Harvard when she grows up. Lexi also plans to become a doctor and discover the cure for cancer. That's a wonderful goal, Lex." When asked, "How do you feel about being nominated for District Student of the Month?", Lexi replied, "Embarrassed and sort of proud of myself. In the beginning of the year, I wasn't that good at anything, and now I've completed a bunch of essays, and I feel really proud." You certainly should feel proud, Lexi. You earning this award is nothing to be embarrassed about, and I'm sure that this is the first of many times you will be honored in this manner. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating Lexi Roth, our Joseph F. Brand Elementary School Student of the Month. At this time, I would like to invite to the podium the principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
At this time, I'd like to call to the podium Annika Koute, the T.G. Connors Student of the Month. Congratulations to Annika Koute, the T.G. Connors Student of the Month. Annika was nominated by her first grade teacher, Ms. Madeline Veda, who is joining us here tonight. Annika is such a delight to have in class. Every day, she comes to school with a huge smile under her mask. Annika is so positive and has such a special personality. She is able to connect with anyone she meets. She is a true example of a well-rounded student every teacher dreams of having. Annika loves learning new skills and seeing her friends at school. Annika shared that she loves making new friends and will always say hello to someone she doesn't know at school or at the park. Annika is always excited during all lessons and naturally will ask high-level questions without realizing it. The moment she starts an activity or assignment, she gets right to work and follows all instructions. Annika's favorite subject in school is math because she enjoys learning about numbers and wants to be challenged. Annika can look at an example of a problem, and then she wants to figure out the steps to solve it independently before asking for help. Annika also shares that she loves writer's workshop because she loves to be creative and write fun, realistic fiction stories. Annika is reading way above grade level. She goes above and beyond without being prompted. Annika is so humble and always has something she wants to improve on. Since September, Annika has been a part of Ms. Barsakovas enrichment during ILP and PGP. Ms. Barsakovas shared that she is a diligent, organized, and sweet student who always does her best. Her amazing personality and persistence allows her to strive toward gaining academic knowledge and achievement. She's always ready for a fun challenge and works diligently to ensure that she understands the new concepts introduced in class. Ms. Barsakovas also shared that she's an incredible pleasure to be a part of her ILP class. She wishes her all the best and to continue doing her best to reach and shine brighter like a star in the sky. When Annika grows up, she wants to be a teacher. Annika says that she wants to be a teacher because she can teach kids new things. When Ms. Veda asked Annika what grade she would want to teach, she said first grade, just like Ms. Veda. When Annika is not in school, she enjoys painting and drawing at home. She especially likes to write and draw cards for family and friends. Annika also loves animals and really hopes to get a dog. In the meantime, she will enjoy spending time with Ms. Veda's dog, Nala, at all our school events. Annika loves Connors School because she loves her teachers. She also shared how she likes how they made the building and how people smile when they walk down the hallway. Annika was once standing near the front of the entrance of the school. While standing there, she said, "Do you think Ms. Addy or Mr. Sorafin would want to hear me read the mission statement?" This just shows how aware Annika is of our school culture. Annika said, "If I get to be Student of the Month, I would feel happy and excited because that means my teacher, mom, dad, and my cousin would be so proud of me." Ms. Stinson shared that Annika is an absolute delight to have in class. She comes to class with a smile, positive attitude, works hard, and does her very best each day. Mr. Azardo shared that Annika is such a talented music student. She excels in all her music theory lessons and loves to sing. Her passion for music shines each and every time she steps into music class. Ms. Capablo shared that Annika always strives for her best in art class. She is fearless when working with new materials and experimenting with her artwork. Annika inspires and encourages her peers through her leadership and kind words. Mr. Sorafin wanted to share how responsible and helpful Annika is at school. He stated just the other day, "Annika approached me to let me know that another student needed help opening their lunch. As I approached the other student, Annika quickly caught my attention and said, 'Don't forget to sanitize your hands before and after, Mr. Sorafin.'" She is wise beyond her years. Today, I had the opportunity to stop by Ms. Veda's classroom to give Annika a special pep talk about tonight. I asked Annika's friends in her class why they thought Annika should be honored for Student of the Month. Every student said the same exact thing. They all said that Annika was kind, always helped her friends, and always included everyone in all activities and games. Her parents shared that they are not only so proud of Annika's academic achievements, but they are most proud of her kindness, the kindness that Annika exudes, and her ability to empathize with others, and her integrity. Annika makes a difference in the lives of everyone around her. She radiates positivity, light, and kindness into her classroom, her family, her friends, and her school. There is a famous quote by Michelle Obama that says, "Success isn't about how much money you make, it's about the difference that you make in people's lives." Annika truly makes a difference in the lives of everyone that gets to know her. Annika, we are so proud of you and are so proud to call you a Connors koala. Please join me in congratulating and giving a round of applause to Annika Koute. At this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Martin Shannon, the principal of Wallace Elementary School.
At this time, I'd like to call Lena Canone to the podium, please. Rock climbing, check. Amazing artist, check. Bicycle riding, check. Optimistic, full of sunshine, check. Bilingual and spending half her time in south of France with her family, check. Creative writer, enthusiastic, and mystery reader, check. Kindness, dedication, responsibility, check. The list goes on and on. Lena is one extraordinary wildcat. Ms. Reedy, Lena's fourth grade teacher, nominated her as Student of the Month and was beyond excited that she was selected as the District Student of the Month for Wallace. In the words of Ms. Reedy, "Lena is a lovely, curious, driven, and action-seeking student. Lena is truly determined and dedicated to her learning. She has diligently worked to develop new math and writing skills and has not let anything stand in her way." Lena demonstrates her growth in math this year through her confidence and her use of new strategies and skills. In reading, Lena has taken ownership over what she reads. She recently took her reading to the next level with the book Danger on Panther Peak, a novel filled with peril and excitement. Lena's enthusiasm for this book was felt by all and inspired her peers to explore new genres. With the help of her parents, Lena has continued to read additional books by the same author and has developed a love for reading. Lena is a kind, respectful, and responsible member of our Wildcat community. She takes pride in her education and always lends a helping hand to those around her. When others feel less than their best, Lena is always there to share a smile or an idea of something fun to do. Lena has always shown kindness and thoughtfulness towards members of her classroom by making sure everyone feels included. Lena is not one to sit back and shy away from a challenge. She has a fierce sense of her own individuality. On her free time, or in her free time, Lena loves to go rock climbing and bike riding with her parents. She also loves to and excels in art, writing, and really anything that's full of action. Lena's parents are exceptionally proud of Lena. Although Lena was born in France, Mrs. Canone admires how well Lena has adapted to school. She is a well-balanced, focused, happy, and thoughtful student. She will no doubt do amazing things one day, and I can't wait to see what it is. She may decide to possibly combine careers and become an astronaut or a designer, but for now, she is a source of pride and inspiration to the girls and boys of Wallace School. Whether she reaches the moon or beyond, nothing is impossible for this young lady. When I asked her if there was anything that she wanted me to tell all of you, she said, "No, you got this." So let's hear it for Lena Canone, our December Wallace School Student of the Month. I would now like to turn the meeting over to Principal Mara of the Hoboken Middle School.
Mr. Shannon's way taller than me. I'd like to call up William Henderson, Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for December 2021. It is my pleasure to introduce William Henderson, a proud member of the Hoboken Middle School Class of 2023 and our December 2021 overall Student of the Month. Nominated by several of his teachers, Will is described as mature, kind, and responsible. Will was shocked when he found out that he was Student of the Month. He shared with me that he hasn't been Student of the Month since first grade at Wallace when Ms. Mara, not me, nominated him, and he is very excited to be selected once again. William is very into sports. He is currently participating in basketball as his extracurricular activity and also plays football and soccer. His favorite place in Hoboken is on the soccer field. William's favorite subjects are math and physical education. With regard to math, he says he really enjoys the topics they learn about, and he thinks it will really help him later in life. For physical education, he says it's really fun, which makes sense because even though he doesn't know where he wants to go to college, he does want to be a professional athlete. Nominated by several of his teachers, Ms. Episcopo had this to say about William. "William is a wonderful student and truly embodies an active learner. He always participates in class, follows and exceeds all of the class expectations, and is eager to work with his peers when instructed to do so. Will takes his learning seriously as he asks questions, reflects on feedback, and extends on his peers' reasoning. Furthermore, Will is very organized. He truly is a role model to his peers and has a great attitude towards school and learning." In and out of school, William's best friends are Ollie and the Benjamins, Gavin, Gabriel, and Gordon, that is. Benjamin Gavin has known William since third grade when they met playing soccer. Ben said, "William is such a positive person and just a good friend overall. He is someone you just like to be around. He is loyal, funny, and has the most contagious laugh." Ollie Checkley added, "He is really good at American football, very smart, kind, and funny. He is a loyal friend and overall just really nice to be around." William's favorite winter activity is a good old-fashioned snowball fight, but never at school, of course. In the summer, he enjoys the warm weather and visiting his grandparents who live in England. Spin a globe, and William has probably been there. He was born in Singapore and has traveled to Japan, South Africa, Ireland, and the place he found to be most interesting, Australia. William's parents couldn't be prouder of him for this achievement, although it did come as a surprise. Dad shared that William seemed to have a good answer every day to how was school, and William replies with one word: good. Please join me in congratulating the Hoboken Middle School December Student of the Month, William Henderson. I'll now call up Ms. Picapeietra, principal of Hoboken High School.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Haley Benway, Hoboken High School Student of the Month for December. She obviously is very comfortable with applause. I met Haley when she was in the seventh grade at Hoboken Middle School as we were in the cast of Tony and Tina's Wedding. I thought at the time she is amazing, so bold, so funny, such a versatile actress. I was in awe of her. Very rarely do you get to meet your students two years before they come to your school, but I was lucky enough to have that experience with Haley. I knew she was going to be a great addition to our Red Wing family. Academically, Haley is doing fabulous. She boasts over a 3.5 grade point average, and I am confident that will only go higher. She's only a sophomore. Ms. Patel shared Haley is a person who embodies the definition of an excellent student. Haley has maintained over a 90 average for the first two marking periods in class. She treats her classmates and teachers with respect. She is always prepared for class and always has a positive attitude. She participates in class discussions and selflessly helps her peers during class activities. She is responsible, submits assignments timely, sometimes early. She gives over 100% in everything that she does in class as well in her extracurricular activities. She's an absolute pleasure to have in class. Ms. Wilson said Haley is both a conscientious student and a kind person. She is consistent with her work and always has a smile on her face. What she really finds impressive is she is never afraid to advocate for herself when she needs clarity on a topic. Ms. Strumgul shared, "I was so happy to hear that Haley received December's Student of the Month. She is more than deserving of this recognition. I met Haley in the beginning of ninth grade while she was a remote learner. During one of our first conversations, I was impressed with her maturity and ability to self-advocate, but also her fun-loving personality. We are so happy to have you here, Haley." From probably one of Ms. Benway's biggest fans, Ms. Miller, "It is so exciting to hear that Haley Benway is our December Student of the Month. I've had the pleasure of working with Haley in the theater department since she was in the fifth grade. I can't believe I have known her for five years. It is very clear within the first few rehearsals we had together many years ago, she had a strong work ethic. Haley is always a student I can count on. She reminds me of things and is always there to help our fellow cast members. She is dependable, team member who is always on time, lines memorized, ready to work, and leads by example. She had the lead role in Twelve Angry Jurors this past fall and had a supporting role in She Kills Monsters, which won top six best high school productions in the world last year at the International Thespian's Festival. What inspires me most about Haley is her willingness to be kind and thoughtful to everyone. She is such a genuine person who wants all students to feel included in the theater department. She welcomes all new members with open arms and truly helps make our department feel like a family. As a student in a class, she is insightful and actively participates in discussion. Haley, Miller is so proud of you. Thank you for all your contributions. Keep reaching for the stars." So this Wonder Woman standing before you, I had to ask her a few questions. So I asked her what So I asked her what of one of her best experiences at Hoboken High School. She brought up our Showcase of Excellence Open House for possible incoming students. She felt really comfortable at the theater table. It was fun to talk to parents and students about what we do as a theater program and how much Hoboken High School has to offer. I asked her what makes her so fabulous. She says, "I drive and push myself to do the very best I can. If I don't try my hardest and put my all my effort into my work, it makes me feel lazy. I also know that as a school policy, you need to have good grades in order to take place in all the activities. I always make sure I'm on my A-game or so I can continue my work in my co-curriculars." What's your plans after graduation, Haley? Well, after I graduate, I plan to go and go to Montclair State University, pursue a degree in theater. From then on, I will either become an actress or a theater teacher. I'm 90% sure this is what I want to do now, but my mind is constantly changing about it, so I still have some time. And yes, you do. What do you like to do when you're not in school? When I'm not in school, I spend most of the time rehearsing for something in theater or chorus or attending student government meetings. In my downtime, I relax and spend time with my family. I thought this was really great, what you said here. There will be days where I'm with my friends from eight in the morning to six at night, so it's nice on the weekends that I get to spend time with my family and doing things. We always have something to do, whether someone's birthday is coming up and we need to plan it, or we need to make room for new things. I asked her who is her tight-knit friends? I have a lot of people that I know will always have my back and be with me. Alanis Rivas and Miguel Cablin. I met them both through theater, and I couldn't ask for better friends. I do have to say that a lot of people in the theater club are like this. We're all really close and have each other's back. I also have friends that I see more throughout the day, like Gianna and Jayla. The two of them loyal, funny, and amazing people to be around. I asked her, "How would you think your friends describe you?" She said, "Funny, loyal, kind, and caring." Haley, I think we are all in consensus. You are funny, you are loyal, you are kind, you are caring, and you are going places. So please keep up the great work.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all our, I don't know if my mic's on or not, to all our students tonight. Great job, keep up the great work, and we look forward to seeing what you're up to in the future. At this time, we are going to take just a very brief recess, just to allow for any families that may need to get home and get to bed and do some homework. If you would like to provide a comment tonight, you can take this time to sign up at the podium. Please note that if you're looking to speak on the upcoming referendum, the list that you should be signing up on is the agenda and non-agenda item list. So with that being said, we'll take just a brief recess and resume in a few minutes. Can everybody please take their seat? We are going to get started. Okay, we're going to get started with the business portion of our meeting. Ms. Good, do you have a business administrator's report tonight?
I do not.
Okay. This month, the board did not meet in committees, but all board members had the opportunity to review the agenda, ask questions, share their thoughts with Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, and Mr. Callagie. So with that being said, we will move on to public comments on agenda items only.
Leaders? She's not here. No?
Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Katamatori. Ms. Delira. Mr. Delatorre.
Yes.
Ms. Kana.
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel.
Yes.
Ms. McGurk.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Takirian.
Yes.
Ms. Angley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we will move on to public comments on non-agenda items. And I just want to remind everybody that of our board policy. Please state your name, your municipality of residence, any business affiliation. Speakers are allowed five minutes, and will be quietly motioned at the 30-second mark. Please address all comments to the chair, and Board Policy states that the board welcomes comments on matters of interest to the board, but this is not an opportunity for dialogue or debate between speakers and board members or the superintendent. Your comments and questions will be recorded into the record and will be addressed in our referendum FAQ going forward. So with that being said, can we have the first speaker?
I would like to apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name or if I stumble through because I can't read your handwriting. First person up at the podium is Lucas Daly.
Lucas Daly, 812 Grand Street. I would like to read an essay I wrote. It's called "How Dare You Say My Education Isn't Good Enough." Hello, my name is Lucas Daly, and I'm an eighth grader at Hoboken Middle School. I am proudly choosing, along with my classmates, to be a Red Wing next year. For as long as I can remember, I've heard parents and kids who are not currently in the district school system imply or flat-out say that my school isn't good enough, that the academics aren't strong, that the education isn't enough. I honestly don't know how they would know. They're not the ones here. I'm there. To those negative people, please let me educate you about my experiences in the Hoboken District Public Schools. I'm just one district public school student. There's over 3,000 of us and more coming. We each have talents and goals. I go to school each day with kids from every background, culture, and community. We learn from each other, just like we learn from all the opportunities in our schools. That, to me, is a real education. How dare you say my school isn't good enough? I'm a high honors student and member of the National Junior Honors Society. I was seventh-grade class president last year and am a student government Red Wing ambassador this year. I take pre-AP algebra and world history. I'm also in my sixth year taking math and ELA advanced courses through a school partnership with CTY Johns Hopkins. I participated in book clubs, Yearbook, and Best Buddies, which celebrates everyone's different abilities. Before Demerit, I was at Wallace for five years, and before that, Brand for three, and I've had amazing teachers every single year. How dare you say my school isn't good enough? I'm really into performing arts, theater, and music. Since kindergarten, I've spent hundreds of hours at Hoboken High and been mentored by the kindest, most talented high schoolers, thanks to our drama club. The K-12 Spring Musical casts 100 kids, and being a part of it has transformed my life. Our theater director, Ms. Miller, has taught me so much, but most of all, self-confidence. Thespians at HMS and HHS put on multiple productions and win awards every year, including at the International Thespian's Competition. Our music program is terrific, too. They're called the Rockin' Red Wings, and they just won a Best Communities Music Education Award. We have bands, chorus, and orchestra. This year, my friends and I are learning violin. HMS opened a new strings course just for us because we were interested in it. Arts around the country are sadly getting cut because of budgets, but the district's performing arts program is growing. I never thought of myself as an athlete, but this summer, I learned to paddleboard and sail on the Hudson River. It's like one of many activities through the district's passport to learning, like golf, rock climbing, and even fencing. For high school, even beyond the awesome football program, there are 14 different competitive sports. I may try for the swim team next year. How dare you say that my school isn't good enough? I've gone to the Red Wings Open House for incoming freshmen since I was in fifth grade. Next year, it's finally my turn. I'm excited for the Walls Without Borders program where students travel all over the world. I'll definitely join the Harvard Model Congress, Model UN, and Mock Trial team. These are all award-winning programs, and the debate team got to compete in Spain. Hoboken High has over 20 AP courses. Try and take some because one day, I hope to get into a university like Northwestern. HHS students earned 17 million in academic scholarships last year, and already this year, someone got into an Ivy. How dare you say my school isn't good enough? Our schools are great, and the more support they have, the better they get. Please don't make negative assumptions about our academics or about us. Don't presume to know what you are not experiencing firsthand. Don't pretend to care about what you haven't until this vote cared about. When you put down our schools, you put down us students, and you put down Hoboken. Here's what you can do: Listen to us, believe in us, be proud of us, invest in us, vote yes for us.
Joshua Einstein, 606 Washington Street, obviously in town. The BOE and supporters of this $330 million sports complex with a school attached have pushed counterfactual propaganda, such as the ever-changing capacity numbers on the current and proposed facilities. Doctorate statistics only changed after former BOE trustee Maureen Sullivan pointed them out, repeatedly failed to share current enrollment numbers with the public, and more. They have accused those committed to getting honest answers, building a better education, and exposing the bad practices of those elected by the people of being, quote, "offensive", unquote "political." Of course, by offensive and political, whether in the counter critique of those who are advocating common sense and good pedagogy against the "build it and they will come" fantasy, the mythology that a past '04 proposal for a new facility was killed because of, quote, "politics," or the lie that the school board referendums cannot happen at the same time as school board elections. What the BOE and many of the other bad idea boosters mean by, quote, "offensive," unquote "political" is that they are upset because many in town have the audacity to disagree with them. We have the audacity to believe elected bodies should not hide plans funded by the public for two years. We have the audacity to believe that spending hundreds of millions of dollars on a new mostly sports complex in an as bigoted as it is transparent attempt to attract students from wealthier families to stay in or enroll will not, in fact, raise up Hoboken's children but is an effort to sweep under the rug the poor results in literacy and maths the current student body has been victim of by this BOE and administration. Because their claim of an enrollment explosion has been proven false by those competent in statistics and the history of the district, boosters of this bad idea are now resorting to using their children for propaganda purposes. Because high school enrollment is actually at a historic low, boosters of this bad idea engaging in demagoguery are claiming that those standing up for the children, good government, are, quote, "against the children." Despite the fact that the current high school was built with a capacity of 1,506 and is currently only occupied by 430 students, having enough room to house the middle school on a single separated floor, the My Way or the Highway Sports Complex totalitarians are hysterically yelling, screaming, and fliering of a pretend alleged busing apocalypse in which their children, heaven forbid, would be bused to another municipality, which, of course, there's no need for. But worse than the official rhetoric coming from the BOE and its enablers in the community is the tenor that the pushers of this bad idea have set for their rank-and-file advocates. For example, at the last BOE meeting, a pro Boondoggle speaker said during the public portion that if you do vote against this, you can say what you like, but you're voting against the children. At the last BOE public propaganda session, another booster said that the tax increase won't affect renters, as if he was unaware that tax increases can be passed on even to those in rent-controlled apartments. In a social media thread, yet another hysterical hype man for this fiasco of elected officials planning behind closed doors stated that, quote, "Building incredible sports complex is a problem," says the person who never played sports, "you clowns. Our kids need sports and deserve quality, you cheap," and then he used the curse word that starts with B, as if the Board of Education didn't already have a swimming pool, the municipal government wasn't planning an ice rink in the Northwest Park, the Hoboken hockey team wasn't less than two years old, and the outdoor basketball court at Columbus Park, accessible to all currently, wasn't being replaced by indoor, quotes, "only accessible by the good graces of the BOE." Of course, as the BOE has ignored the notion that any time during the last two years it should have informed the public, it is no surprise that the BOE has also ignored the location of the 15-plus-year-old, quote, "temporary prefabricated classrooms" part of the Wallace School on which an annex of two to three stories could be built for between 200 to 300 students, actually addressing their pretend enrollment explosion in the lower grades. Of course, if the BOE was honest, they would have at any point addressed the shrinking cohort size of children traveling up through the grades together. But then again, an honest BOE, even if it believed in the enrollment explosion it pretends has been happening or coming since 2004 but has never materialized, would be ending Hoboken's participation in school choice, phasing out students from other towns in our schools as they graduate in order to free up 165 seats in the public district school system for Hoboken students. But this BOE has been dishonest since before day one. You have lied by omission and explicitly, and many people are upset and ashamed of your behavior even before your bad idea boosters began demagoguing the issue by arguing that non-parents, parents of children too young or too old to be in the schools or at other schools, should have no voice. How infantile is it not only to manufacture blatantly false stats but to tell others, including parents, that they don't care about the children just because they disagree with you? How immature is it to pretend that there can be no negatives and then to use children to try to make an emotional point? You have no shame. That's why on January 25th, so many people in our town will vote no, and on Election Day in November, this coming November, many will vote to get rid of the three Board of Ed trustees who have lied repeatedly to the public.
Paul Presanzano, 218 Hudson Street, Ward 1. Education is a priority in my household, and for many people who are not in favor of this proposal, my son and his future siblings, along with our children, will benefit from a new high school. But many are struggling with the community aspects of the project, the $331 million price tag, and especially the $60 million in contingencies, and also the lack of inclusion in the process. It seems that all parties involved want what's better for our children, but it feels like there was less focus on making education a priority. There was less focus on spending our tax dollars more wisely. But there was more focus on community amenities. On September 25th, 2019, the HBOE submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education a plan for a new high school, which we found out from the media. They checked, they didn't check a box to say this, well, they checked a box to say that this will be paid for with solely tax dollars, leaving the community in the dark for those next couple of years until we fast-forward to November 2021. The media alerted the majority of the public. The district parents got an email from the superintendent, I'm told, and the city council got a briefing. Then, before any information session was ever held, Mayor Balla and his team came out in support. Were they in the loop the last four years? Then the vote by mail went out late December, and voting started on Jan. 2022. And here we are today. There was less than 10 hours of information sessions. Not all the facts were posted for the community to learn, because Jan. 5, you guys updated your fact sheet, there was a big dump of data. So those who voted didn't have all the details. The whole process doesn't meet a passing grade, but that's water on the bridge, and what's done is done. You draw your own conclusions, but the majority of the community was left out. We've asked what the building would cost if we cut back on community amenities, and we still have yet to see a response. If we are to build a truly transformational educational system with a state-of-the-art building, we need to focus as education is the priority, not the community. Could there have been options for this building before there was a vote pushed? Of course, but right now, there's only one option available: the vote. During the past four years, when the Hoboken Board of Education developed this plan, the community could have been included and had a more productive process. This is why many are upset that they were not included. Why did we only shoot for the stars when we could have shot for the moon? Why were community amenities so important? Why didn't we think bigger? Why didn't we... Why didn't we maybe put a second school right next to the high school on the football field? We would not only offer our high schoolers a new school, but our middle schoolers, and they'd have their own experiences in a separate school. Think about that. We could have bought two schools, built two schools on the same parcel of land, then we would have had three schools, including the old high school, and we wouldn't have to worry about capacity for the next 50 years. I bet if the community is involved from the start, more of our children would have been able to enjoy a new school. These are just a few suggestions that, in a productive process, could have helped generate ideas with the community involved. This referendum is a bit sickening in a way, because it's pitting neighbor against neighbor, and that's not something we want. We want to bring our community together. It could have been kept in check if the community was included four years ago when the proposal was being hatched. Everyone here is on the same team and looking to make education a priority, no matter what is said on social media, or what is said in the bars, or what is said at the dog park. Right now, there's only one option, and that's what makes people feel uncomfortable. It's a yes or no vote. The Hoboken Board of Education should have obtained a more economically responsible proposal. They should have let the city council balance sheet worry about the community amenities. The $331 million price tag is one of the largest in the history of New Jersey. There's been less than 10 hours of discussion on this, with no other options than a vote for yes or no. And we are headed to the polls. How can the Hoboken Board of Ed and supporters not be surprised if there is some pushback? That's the beauty of democracy. We should head back to the drawing board and put forth a proposal with the community involved, and make education a top priority, not community amenities. Thank you.
Renee Perry?
Good evening. My name is Renee Perry. I'm a 12-year Hoboken resident and have three children at Brant Elementary School. I also teach math at Hoboken High School. My children attend a school that does not have enough bathrooms for all students on each floor. The boys and girls share a bathroom. Their art and music teachers have no designated classroom space. This means that art and music must come to them. Without classroom space, every art teacher in the last five years at Brant has left, leaving my children asking, "Why do our favorite teachers keep leaving?" Each of them was an exceptional teacher. Who can blame teachers for leaving? No teacher should stay at a school where they have no classroom and must switch rooms every single day, every single period. They can find a better job elsewhere. There is no library at Brant School. Can you imagine no library in an elementary school? Even the gym space is now shared with art and music supplies and random other school necessities. It looks like a storage garage. Our children deserve more bathrooms, art rooms, and designated library and gym space. These are basic accommodations you would find in any elementary school in New Jersey and elsewhere. Building a new high school, and in turn, a new elementary school, would provide the space for each of our elementary schools to offer basic academic and structural requirements for our children. Building a new high school with a parking garage, facilities for the community, and state-of-the-art classrooms opens up a world of possibilities for our most senior learners and would, by default, attract better teachers. Think about it: Would you want to commute to Hoboken every single day, including when it snows, and try to find a parking spot before 8:15 a.m. on a non-street cleaning side? If you don't live here, it's not likely. When discussing why we need such high-tech laboratory space, it is because what we currently have, while outstanding, is still limited by the infrastructure of our current building. Some of our lab classes just cannot provide the space to conduct more advanced coursework. We have exceptional science teachers at Hoboken High. If they had exceptional laboratories, the sky would truly become the limit. Our science rooms are old, and though well-equipped to get by, they lack the most advanced technology we can provide in a high school. We cannot compete with better schools because we simply lack the facilities. For those hung up on the sports arenas, yes, there is an ice hockey rink and a new pool. If we lived in the suburbs, we would also likely have a baseball field, soccer field, and other sports facilities spread out on several acres. We are limited in our space, and as a result, our sports are included within our infrastructure. That is city living. This is not a building designed around sports. This is a building designed around a community. This is a building designed around academic excellence. Classrooms configured to facilitate exploration and curricula designed to stimulate thinking and discussion. Advanced lab classes we can offer with even better teachers, because they will have somewhere to park. Out of the more than 466 students currently at the high school, I teach close to 120 of them every day. Many I have come to know very, very well, all of whom I cherish. When I think of them, I imagine a meeting place where students and teachers can meet together unhindered by space. I imagine state-of-the-art science labs where our students compete at the national level, putting Hoboken on the map. I imagine our district not looked at as a stepping stone for the suburbs, but a place to live for the next 20 years. A place where young students long await arriving at the high school. I imagine Hoboken is a town where people come to live for the education. I am finished imagining. We can make this happen. I am voting yes.
Daniel Thompson? Daniel Thompson?
Please keep your mask on.
Daniel Thompson, 230 Park Avenue.
Thank you. If you could pull your mask up, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm opposed to the proposed new high school project for several reasons. First, the new Hoboken High School is not needed. There are fewer Hoboken High School students now than when the existing and fully-functional high school was built in 1962. At that time, there were about 1,200 students in 10th to 12th grades compared to the 860 students for which the Curden High School is designed, and the number is and will continue to go down. Second, the exorbitant cost of the high school: $242 million plus 30 years of 2.2% interest, totaling about $331 million, paid by the taxpayer at $93 per year per $1,000 property value, which is about $500 per year per taxpayer for 30 years, or $15,000 per taxpayer. Note that this tax can be passed on to rent-controlled tenants via tax surcharge. Third, the new three-to-five-story structure is damaging to the local environment. It will block the flow of sunlight and air to the surrounding neighborhood and to Columbus Park. Fourth, most of the exorbitant cost is for non-educational structures: hockey rinks, Olympic-sized swimming pools, et cetera. These will not in any way improve the education provided by the new school. What is needed to improve education is better teachers and courses, not sports facilities. And finally, fifth, the process by which this proposed high school plan was not presented to the public until December 2021, then, when the referendum on it is January 25th, 2022, less than two months later. The intent has been clearly to not properly inform the citizens as to the real consequences of the project, but only to give misleading information design to persuade the uninformed voters to vote yes for something against their interests. Also, at all the meetings preceding the election, citizens have only had limited opportunity to explore the project or to ask questions, to speak interactively with the school board and to the designers of the project. The lack of need for the project, the financial and environmental damage done by the project, and the deceptive way it has been presented to the public with little time for the public to truly understand its consequences are all reasons to vote no on January 25th. After this deception has been properly rejected by the voters, the citizens and school board can explore what needs there truly are and act accordingly. Please pass the word, vote no on January 25th. Thank you.
Mary Andreka?
It's Andreka. Mary Andreka, 159 Ninth Street. In 1967, Hoboken High School had a graduating class of 400 seniors, and the high school itself had around a total of 1,200 students, which comprised three grades: sophomore, junior, and senior. The freshmen were in the junior high at Demerus then. Those 1967 student numbers will never be repeated again because the world demographics have been shifting and changing. The birth rate is falling in 51 countries all around the world. How many people today have only one child, have more than one, or more than two? In my generation, many families had four, five, and six children per family. The proposed new high school was designed by architects for 860 students, 340 less students than the high school that was designed in 1962 for 1,200 students. Yet this high school's structure is a gargantuan design structure at five and three stories high, two stories higher than the old one. The architects knew the current population of the high school is around 400 students and has been declining over the last 30 years. Two-thirds of the structure is not for learning or classrooms, but comprises a sports complex of a hockey rink, Olympic-sized swimming pool, basketball court, two theaters, weight room, and two indoor tennis courts to compensate for the three outdoor tennis courts whose footprint will contribute to the massive structure. The James J. Farina Fieldhouse is one story high on Jefferson Street and will have the footprint built upon and rise up as part of the five stories of the high school since the front of the school would be on Jefferson. Costing $241 million because the project is really a sports complex that happens to have a high school attached to it, do they plan to rent out the hockey rink to sports corporations for money? This massive destructive structure would rise up like a wall budding upright against Columbus Park and cast five and three stories of shade on the park for most of all the daylight in a day. I was annoyed when the Columbus condo buildings rose up on that same western side because they cast shadows on the park, where now there happens to be a children's playground. There would be a significant loss of natural light and air over those towering old sycamores in the park. An expensive new high school would mean substantially higher taxes for everyone in town, and that means all the renters, too, would be on the hook in the way of a surcharge added to their rent to help pay for the $241 million structure.
Can you please pull your mask up? Please pull your mask up.
I can't breathe. I have breathing issues. This is the best I can do.
The rule is that we have to have our masks on.
I have it on.
Please pull it up over your nose.
There is something else.
Thank you.
There is no government funding at all. This one project will cause economic hardship for everyone in town except for the rich people. New York has the highest unemployment in the United States, double the rest of the nation, at 9.4%, according to the New York Times on December 14, 2021. The city has changed permanently because 30% of its office workers will never want to go into the office again. Therefore, people do not have to live in close proximity to New York to warrant living in Hoboken. Hoboken is fed off of New York since the 1980s. The developers seized upon that and created a crowded town of now 60,400 people. There is only a little over 3,000 schoolchildren in Hoboken, so the number of schoolchildren and parents is about 6,000. That is 1/10 of the population of Hoboken, so they are a minority. They cannot expect the majority of residents, 9/10 of the population, to be harmed by their extravagant desires at an over-the-top, excessively-expensive new high school. We all need to have a say in this and help guide the board and help the students in an academic way. The board is going about... Buildings and hockey rings do not make better students. Teachers, tutors, and parents do. The board is going about this all the wrong way. The expensive building will not bring up test scores. Money should be spent on academic support systems for tutoring and hiring the best teachers possible with comparable salaries to match. With substantially higher taxes for the next 30 years of banned bonding that this particular high school will command, it will push tenants and older people out of town. $241 million plus $90 million in interest for a new high school is unnecessary when the current high school can be refashioned for other grades, much less the cost, and is a complete extravagant waste of money, the worst kind of waste. Vote no on January 25th.
James Castiglione? James?
James Castiglione, 412 Washington Street. Good evening to the members of the board. I will be voting yes on this referendum, and I urge all members of the community to do so as well. You know, as I mentioned at the December board meeting, this building here was the original high school for the city of Hoboken. In the late 19th century, as public schooling was gaining momentum throughout the United States, the citizens of the city of Hoboken recognized they needed to build a high school, and they built this building. Half a century later, as education had changed, the needs of a 20th-century education system were paramount, and our existing high school was built. Now, we are in the 21st century, and it is time that the city invest in a 21st-century facility for our children. Certainly, it's normal for any public school district to engage in capital projects. We see it all the time in the suburbs. We see the facilities that they have that have for years attracted citizens of Hoboken to live out there. There's no reason we can't have state-of-the-art facilities here in Hoboken. That being said, I think the biggest mistake that has been made in the public's perception, or some members of the public's perception, is that this is about a high school, because this is really about a transformational vision for the entire public school district from top to bottom. We have to understand how this project enables the district to address all of its critical needs. As we know, the three elementary schools are old, and they are at or beyond capacity. More growth is coming. This project results in another elementary school, this building, which will be renovated, completely paid for by the state. Number two, the middle school is bursting at the seams. Does not have all of the facilities, including the academic facilities, to meet all of the curricular needs of the students. Moving the middle school to the high school takes care of that issue. The district has run out of rooms for pre-K 3 and 4. This project will provide additional rooms for that need. And lastly, of course, the invigorated curriculum and academic offerings of the high school don't have the 21st-century facilities that they need, and this project will provide those, as I already mentioned, facilities that are standard for students elsewhere in New Jersey. I want to thank the board in that in designing this project, rather than cutting out community interests, they actually included interest facilities that actually benefit the broader community. They didn't have to do that, and it's a strong positive of this particular project, and it speaks to the broader issue of the public good. Because it is normal to invest in these sorts of infrastructure projects that benefit the entire city, this is a slam dunk project as far as I can tell. Now, it also builds upon the quality of the education that exists in the district. We've heard some statistics. I want to just expand very briefly. We know that the high school offers 23 AP classes. I recently found out that 32% of last year's high school students took AP classes at the high school. We have a gifted and talented program and a passport to learning program that are the envy of school districts in our area. We've heard about the $17.4 million in academic scholarships of last year's graduating class. Important to note that that's up from $1.8 million just six years ago. So there is a clear trajectory of improvement here. When you look at the fact that 96% of 2019 grads were accepted to two- and four-year colleges, and 97% of 2020 grads, you can see the tremendous success and the external validation of the success of the quality of the education in the high school. and the external validation of the success of the quality of the education in the high school and the district. And so I urge the public to support this transformational vision and vote "yes" on the referendum. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Hello, my name is Mike Brown. I live at 821 Washington Street. I am opposed to this current plan. I am agnostic on whether we need a new high school or don't need a new high school. The part that really bothers me is the sense of secrecy. I hate secrets. Every time I hear someone talking about this project, I hear $241 million, leaving out the other $89 million. So if we're being honest, we have to talk about $30 million. And to not do so, I think, is somewhat dishonest, and it bothers me a great deal. Some of the people who are opposed to this project have been trying to get a budget for the project. I've seen the summary of the budget, but when I asked to try to get the excruciating detailed version of the budget, that's not available. Why things are being... I don't want to use "hidden," but are hard to obtain baffles me. This project seems to be more than two years old. Yet I only learned of it in December, late December. I am well-informed. I pay attention to what's happening in the community, and I didn't hear about it until last December. I am baffled why we're having a referendum with such short notice. There should have been a notice that we're going to have a referendum months ago, a detailed budget months ago. And the refuse... Let me be careful about what I say. The inability for me to obtain this information really bothers me. The next step from where I sit... Let me say it slightly differently. It bothers me that we have not yet had what I'm going to refer to as a public hearing on this. How can we have a referendum for such a large amount of money without having one or several public hearings to let the community express itself? I have heard a rumor that there is in fact a second proposal. Whether that's true or not, I have no way of finding that out because no one said "yes, we." There is an alternative? Because it's... I tend to be very careful in the words I use. I've heard nothing about whether it exists or doesn't exist, and that really bothers me because going back to the concept of "I hate secrets." From where I sit and from what I've seen, in effect, we're being asked to pay for a Rolls-Royce when in fact what we need is a Ford. We might even need two Fords. But we... This proposal has not been vetted in a way that the entire community has an opportunity to fully understand it. There are people... There are... Excuse me, I have another set of notes. Talking in round numbers, there are 43,000 people registered to vote in the city of Hoboken. For the last election, 15,000 of them... And these are round numbers. 15,500 of them voted. That means 36% of the available people to vote, only 36% voted. The referendum will not have that same level of participation. So assuming it's 60%, that means 903... 900, 300 people will have voted "yes," and I'm making assumptions. In fact, when you run down through the math, it means maybe 13% of the people who are registered to vote will have voted "yes" to get this to happen. My numbers could be off. I may be making it up. But I think we have to let everybody know when we're talking about this kind of money. It's not like we're talking about $100,000. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars, and I question this proposal. I vote "no."
Antonio Grana?
I just want to make one comment, just to address your comment about the detailed budget. It is on the district homepage amongst many other documents.
The summary is... Not the detailed one.
There is a detailed project budget on our homepage.
I can't find it. Hoboken downtown.
The link says "project budget," I believe.
Okay, I had prepared remarks, and I think I'm going to leave them. So let me start with, um, thank you, board.
Oh, please state your name.
Oh, I will. Don't worry, I promise. Thank you, board. Thank you, superintendent. And thank you, President, for all that you are doing. Thank you very much. My name is Antonio Grana. I'm at 659 First Street. And I became very involved in this matter because I didn't do it for politics. I didn't do it to engage and take sides. I see the discourse that has gone down in this community. I did it for a very simple reason. I have a fifth grader at Connors Elementary School. And let me tell you just a minute about my story. I came into the school district in kindergarten with all the same questions everybody else has about the district. You hear these stories. I am now six years into this process, and I bleed Connors Koalas red. I am baked into the school district. You have demonstrated to me the quality of the education. You have demonstrated the resiliency to deal with crises in different situations like COVID, to increase and improve the curriculum, and to do all of that for my daughter in an environment where she gets a diverse experience in the school where I don't think she would get anywhere else. I thank you again. There are the obvious pragmatic things that make this about much more than a high school, okay? I love my school. My daughter wants home from school. That's why I didn't move. I think it's the greatest thing in the world. But you know what? And we love our school. It's an edifice from another century that we love. It's the center of our community. But you know what? It was built on the decisions that my great-grandmother's generation made. It was a decision they said when they built that school and a number of other schools in this community that said, "We have to invest in these children." Now we have a high school which went and opened, and I've talked to people that went to the freshman class. They said it was the greatest thing in the world. That's fantastic. I love it. The decision to build that high school and make it state-of-the-art for the 20th century and for the freshman class, those are great things. They were all done before I was even born. We have talked a lot today about, you know, what is really is this, you know, a lot of conversations about fueling all of the plans, ice rinks, and this and so forth. It's a very pragmatic thing. We are bursting at the seams. My school is bursting at the seams. Your school is bursting at the seams. My daughter will become... I'm going to emotionally have to get rid of you a tiger now, okay? I got to let go of koala. But we have a middle school that is going to burst at the seams. And we don't have a high school that is capable of teaching the 21st-century curriculum that this state wants us to teach our children. So let me say this. A lot of people will come up, and they say this, and they say the board, and they say this. There is a reason why we have representative government. We have elected you, and you have hired an administration that has demonstrated that this school district will move forward. You will see it with parents in this district. We feel it. There's a momentum. There's an excitement. And we have elected you and hired you to do this. This is not a completely transparent process. This is a process that takes a long, long time to develop. You didn't come in front of us a few weeks ago to do a last-minute spring upon us. You came at us with a sense of urgency. You said, "We finally got it approved. We've finally gone through all the steps. It is time to vote 'yes.'" I have 30 seconds. I just want to tell one little story. I'm just looking at my... I'm looking at 30 seconds. I'm going to tell one little story. Years ago, I was on a board where I had to approve a school, and the planner came up and said, gave me a language about an inherently beneficial use, and we don't have to prove this, and we don't have to prove that, which I agreed with. And I asked him for the... People in the audience, what does that mean for people to... Give it to us in English. And he said, "Every civilization's job one is to invest in the next generation. That is how you carry civilization forward. Vote 'yes.'" Thank you for listening.
Tatiana Zlatzky? Tatiana Zlatzky?
Good evening, folks. It is hard to believe that it is 2022. Packages are being delivered to our homes by drones. The devices in the palms of our hands...
I'm sorry. Can you just state your name and municipality?
Oh, of course. I'm sorry. I am Tatiana Zlatzky at 1404 Grant Street. Thank you. Thank you. It is hard to believe that packages are being delivered by drones. The devices in the palm of our hands have 100,000 times more processing power than the Apollo 11 space flight did in 1969. And yesterday, the New York Times reported that a man with a bad heart received a genetically-modified animal heart. The future, that is what I want to talk about tonight. The future is here. Our children will compete in a truly global economy with somebody on the other side of the world where the best jobs will be going to people who are the best educated. My family immigrated here from Moscow when I was 11 years old for a better future. We lived in some pretty tough neighborhoods and ended up in typical suburbia, so I got to see a lot of public schools growing up. And as a kid, I remember being surprised when my family would be excited to make the next move into a smaller apartment that would cost more money. And I would ask my mom, "Why are we moving here?" And she always said, "The public schools are better here. It's for a better future." Hoboken has an amazing public school district. This Board of Education, Dr. Johnson, and our educators have collectively transformed this curriculum over the past 10 years. I am humbled and grateful by all of the work that they have done. And now, the district, whose job it is to put together a plan, has put a plan to dramatically improve the educational facilities for the high school. It is a path to house learning spaces, to support the improved curriculum, to progress hands-on learning required, and spur creativity our children need, to add future-oriented and highly specialized programs, and yes, God forbid, athletic and wellness facilities. Bringing this building online is also critically important to make space for kids in our overcrowded elementary and middle schools. The tragedy here is not the price tag. It is that a part of our community, as you have heard tonight, has the audacity to think all of us do not deserve that kind of a future, that our kids should not have better opportunities than we did, and that we should feel bad or ashamed for wanting more for them and the city of Hoboken. The narrative of stalling this project and evaluating other alternatives does not appreciate the urgency of the situation and the enrollment challenge our district faces at the elementary and middle school levels that would be addressed with this new school. And people suggesting it are clearly not living those challenges. Additionally, this is the third proposal in the last 14 years. The other two, God knows, and to be clear, cost less. The no-vote will not only delay this project, but it will make it impossible. And furthermore, the idea that a plan should be developed by a community, I'm sorry to say, is laughable. And to suggest that the endless hours these busy people have spent hearing from all of us is generous, in my opinion. Attacking their integrity is unacceptable. The time to act is now. Distracting the public with conspiracy theories, secret plans, and delaying this decision is irresponsible and poses a risk to our kids achieving better education outcomes and to our collective future, which I think can and will be very bright. I hope you choose the responsible path and vote "yes," as I plan to, for a better future for Hoboken.
Jerry Willem? Jerry?
Jenny Milman, 1100 Maxwell Place. That's a tough one to follow. But I'm just going to be very quick and simple about this. Our school is one of the lowest-ranked schools in all of New Jersey for the amount of wealth that it has here. We should be putting our wealth into our schools and the education, and it starts by having the proper facilities. The quality of the facilities we currently have does not even come close to the quality of the education. Our children deserve to learn in an environment that is reflective of the care and love the Hoboken High School staff shows them already. Just to touch on the taxes, any great suburban high school comes with high taxes. There is no town in New Jersey where the high school is amazing and the taxes are low. If you want quality education, you have to pay for it one way or another, and that's either higher taxes to fund public education or to pay for private education. At least if we pay in taxes, I know that that's an investment in our community, and it could eventually increase our property values over time. The concern that the school is too elaborate and expensive is an antiquated perspective with a tunnel vision approach. Open your minds to see what this can do for our mile square. I vote "yes."
Roseanne Versace?
Roseanne Versace? Good evening, Roseanne Versace. I'm a third-grade science teacher at Wallace School. I'm the president of the Hoboken Education Association and a lifelong Hoboken resident. I'd like to just begin by saying, although I think the tenor of this meeting is a little better than the others, but I've attended most of the meetings and sessions regarding the new high school, and I would just like to make a comment that the vitriol that many have spewed toward a body of men and women, and mostly women, who are volunteers and give a lot of time and energy to the district and certainly to this project and to the community is really very disheartening, and I just wanted to make that comment. So, and now I'll talk about the high school. So, um, I, as a resident and as a teacher, a number of people have asked me what my thoughts are about the high school. And I've tried to sort of educate them on what the whole background is, and I said, "Well, the high school numbers may... The high school may not be exceeding the enrollment or the numbers that it was originally built for, but then again, you have to also consider when the high school was built, when these other buildings were built," as Mr. Castiglione mentioned. And certainly at the time when I went to school in Hoboken, if you had 30 or 35 kids in a class, that was not really looked upon, not frowned upon. But we know better now, in 2022, or certainly in 2021 at least, that smaller classes are much more conducive to a better learning environment. So there's that. The other thing is that we need another elementary school. I teach at Wallace, and Wallace is, you know, splitting at the seams. Certainly, the middle school is. Connors maybe not as much, and Brant certainly is. And what are the options in Hoboken? Well, there's not really an empty parcel of land. There's not another building that we can take over. Had there been some people who were more visionary back in the 70s and 80s, or in the 80s, let's say, we might have held on to Lankoff, or we might have held on to Keely, or we might have held on to David E. Rue. But they were sold, or converted, or whatever, and so here we are. I love these old buildings. I love this building. Every time I come here for a meeting, if you've seen me, I constantly have my neck up like that because I'm always looking at the architecture. I go to all the buildings as the union president. I visit all the buildings on a frequent basis. I love the entrance to Brant, but Brant is an old building. Wallace is kind of... Wallace is kind of nineteen-seventy, so it's not the fanciest, but nevertheless, but Wallace also needs some, you know, could use some sprucing up. But Connors as well, the large staircase. These buildings are beautiful, but they're over a hundred years old. Wallace, Calabro was the most recent building, but Wallace is in its fiftieth year this year. The cornerstone was laid in 1972. So we really need a new building. The state-of-the-art high school building that has been presented is really, it's an exciting, exciting endeavor. It's exciting for the students, it's exciting for the community. When Lucas Daley spoke, honestly, after he spoke, I thought, "What could I possibly say to add to that?" But I think that the community really needs to expand their vision as to what this is really all about. We need to add a new school. We need to give the students and the incoming students the kind of facilities that they are worthy of and the kind that they deserve in 2022, not facilities that were built a hundred years ago. Lastly, because I'm probably running out of time, I do want to just make a comment to some of the people who have spoken about the teachers in the district, and I take umbrage to that. I'm not sure what you base your opinions on. I'm not sure what you base your opinions on about anything about the Hoboken Public School District. If you had children in the district, maybe then I would say, "Well, okay, maybe you've had an experience with it." If you have visited the schools, maybe then you have a reason to speak. If you've spoken to any of the teachers and had any kind of open dialogue with them to find out, "Well, maybe, you know, are we not at the level that we should be?" But I argue that you probably don't, and not that you probably don't, that you don't. So before you start maligning the people that dedicate there every single day, during a pandemic, we were here, and we have been here. And before you malign and denigrate my... Not, I shouldn't just say my, but the people that I represent and me as a teacher, then you really...
Time.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna say, "Thank you all for your time," and vote yes.
Hello, my name is Shirithi Hari. I reside at 617 Jefferson Street. As a Hoboken resident for almost ten years and a recent homeowner, as a parent of three children at Brant Elementary, as an immigrant who uprooted my life because of the lure of a visionary education system here in the United States, I am proud to vote yes for the new high school. I don't look at a yes as a vote of confidence for any individual leading the charge, or even the BOE, or a specific feature. A yes is a vote for a once-in-a-generation opportunity to advance our children's futures and build tomorrow's citizens. History has taught us that real change rarely comes from making small incremental improvements or papering over cracks. It comes from having a bold vision and not being afraid to take a leap forward at the right time. A timely investment in a state-of-the-art facility enables our children to tackle and address some of the biggest opportunities and challenges of our time, namely keeping pace with the leapfrogging advances in technology while also navigating a collective social reckoning around diversity, equity, and inclusion. There are eight science labs and specialty facilities that are outlined in the plan, including a biomedical lab, a science sphere lab, and engineering science labs. Our children will be afforded access to cutting-edge technologies that position them for higher education and careers. There's a lot of debate on social media about the aquaponics lab. That lab supports a critical innovation in the battle against climate change, arguably the biggest challenge confronting us today. Investment in sciences are balanced with investments in the arts: music rooms, art rooms, media and theater art classrooms, and auditorium culinary arts, and sports, providing children a wide range of exposure and the ability to shine in what they're passionate about, rather than just pigeonholing them in what we can currently afford right now. This is not just a high school, as others have noted. It enables our middle schoolers to benefit from the current high school and the creation of a fourth elementary school here at Demerist with much-needed upgrades. This uplifts the entire district, and each child in Hoboken will have the opportunity for a strong pre-grades-to-12 education. This is a rising tide that lifts all boats. I know there's many people who are still evaluating the pros and cons of the proposal, and I admit, I experienced a little bit of sticker shock at the price tag of $2.41 million. As a side note, I'm a little confused by the repeated references to $330 million. When I'm asked to give the value of my home, I don't add on the interest I'm paying on that mortgage, so I don't quite get that tone. But that aside, that is the cost and the unfortunate reality of today of building a state-of-the-art facility in an urban area like Hoboken. If you look at comparables in nearby towns, this is unfortunately the cost it takes right now, particularly with increased inflation and supply chain costs due to the pandemic. Translating this investment into tax and rental implications, I think, helps us better dimensionalize this. This is something we can afford. This community can afford this for the future of our children. I hear some frustration around the process and the desire for more transparency. I am not a scholar of the regulation and the processes involved. This seems like reasonable people have done rational things and brought a thoughtful proposal in front of us. Trust the process. It's human to want to know more, but please let us respect the individuals who put their expertise into this proposal. There are some concerns about specific aspects of the plan and what are must-haves, what are nice-to-haves. Some think the hockey rink is overkill. Others are aghast that the football field will no longer be on ground level. Some think there's too much emphasis on sports. Others think there's not enough. No one idea is right or wrong. We are not gonna get the Goldilocks proposal. Let's not fight over the details and lose sight of the bigger picture. Voting yes now does not mean that we have to put blind faith in anybody. It means we're making a strong beginning. This journey will take three more years. It's gonna require committed involvement from all of us to make sure that the execution translates this ambitious vision into reality. We need to be a part of every step. Not to mention, if we vote no now, there are actual costs, the cost of rents associated with keeping pace with our enrollment numbers, and more importantly, the opportunity cost for a generation of students who will only wonder what could have been possible for them. Our children are watching us now, and it's time to act. Ultimately, this is not a vote on whether the process was perfect or if we agree with every individual design choice. It is a vote to align on the outcome that we want, the best possible future for our children. In any functioning democracy, we can disagree with individual elements of the policy, but still find common ground to do the greatest collective good. Please make that choice on January 25th and vote yes.
Kristen Robin?
Christopher Munoz. I am the first vice president of the Hoboken Education Association and a proud Hoboken High School teacher. I've learned a lot of things tonight, and I've learned that if you talk really fast and yell to the microphone, you must be right. And you would know that that's not the case if you took effective public speaking with Mr. Huggins. I learned that people don't know the difference between $240 million and $330 million. You would know that if you took math with Miss Perry. I've noticed that people don't know the difference between airflow and a lack of oxygen because of a structure. If they took science with Mr. LeBeck, they would know oxygen goes around things. Okay? I've heard a lot of people here say that instead of a new school, we should have higher, better teachers. I work at Hoboken High School, and I'm a proud teacher, and I gotta tell you, these are the greatest group of professionals I've ever had the privilege to work with. I really wish, I understand that people have a choice in this vote coming up on January 25th. You could vote yes, you could vote no. But what you shouldn't do is talk negatively and disparagingly about a group of people or students when you've never even stepped one foot inside of our buildings. Okay? And, you know, also, you know, and I also had to say this, someone also said that there was no public meetings. If they had math with Mr. McKenzie, they would know the difference between six and zero. So I don't understand why we have to come up here and be absolutely mean to each other. The tenor of these, or I should say, the tone of these meetings, the past two board meetings, have been horrendous. I've never seen a group of people scream at each other over something that is so simple, an investment in our future. Okay? Yelling at the board, basically saying that we're hiding things. Six public meetings is not hiding anything. All right? Saying that you're taking away my voice. No, you have a vote on January 25th. That's called democracy. Okay? So, I mean, and I know President Angley, I have to address you and not the crowd, but this is addressed to them. You do realize that the people on this dais here, they're volunteers. They don't get paid. You do realize that. So they didn't volunteer to get yelled at by you. Sorry. I know I should be addressing you. Okay? So all I'm saying and everything is that my students, they look at social media, they read newspapers. Maybe you shouldn't speak negatively about them or their district if you've never even once visited our building. So I am a proud Hoboken High School teacher, and I'm asking everyone in the Hoboken community to vote yes on January 25th. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. You've had your five minutes tonight.
Excuse me one minute. Robin, are you... I thought you were gonna call together. I'm sorry.
There is a public meeting in person on Monday. If you'd like to attend that, you can ask all of the questions you'd like.
Hi, Robin Pica Pietra, 615 Madison Street. For those who don't know me, I am also the principal of Hoboken High School for the last ten years. I, for one, am thankful this is not gonna be a belabored process. We have had multiple informational meetings. There is democracy, as Mr. Munoz said. You have the right. You have the right to vote yes, you have the right to vote no. But over the course of the past month, I have read and heard more ugliness and mean things written about children in my school that is absolutely horrific, and people who write that should be ashamed of themselves. I am in Hoboken for twenty-six years now, twenty-six years. I own my place, and I have a choice. And to me, the choice is an investment. It's an investment for all those... I don't have children in the district. I have no children. I do have children. I have 466 children at Hoboken High School, and I am choosing to invest in them. I think the most ludicrous thing I heard this evening, was it a Rolls-Royce or a Ferrari, when we could get a Ford? Well, that is really lowering the bar. And if that's what you think we should be doing or what this district is about, you are sadly mistaken. I can't imagine ever telling a child, "Eh, don't shoot for the ninety, go for the seventy." Honestly. It's, what I'm hearing is lists and fast talk, and lists and fast talk about the same stuff. It's just the same stuff. It's one person getting up after the next person, after the next person, speaking and saying just the same nonsense. And I don't think you have all your information, because I know you love to put the high school as a declining enrollment. While my freshman class is 165 strong, I'm pretty confident next year I can look at a class about 140, 150. You know why I know that? Because people are calling me, asking me, "How do I get my kids? How do I enroll?" Out of charter schools, not just charter schools, out of private schools to come to You know, like I said, I'm a taxpayer. I'm willing to invest in the future for the kids of this district. And for those who don't have children in the district and are super concerned about your taxes rising, think of it as an investment in your property. Right? A great school system brings value to a community. But please, please, keep my students' names, my teachers' names out of your mouth, because they do not deserve your anger. They do not deserve it. To my Board of Ed, to my Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent Dr. Johnson, you all have a vision, a vision that is beautiful and surrounds the families and the students of this community. And I will vote yes. I know all my friends are voting yes, because this is an investment in students, the community, and for all. Thank you.
Andrew? Andrew?
Hi. My name is Andrew Cortuccio. I live at 904 Jefferson. I just wanted to start off and say, I'm new to Hoboken and just learning about the process. And I do agree that both sides have been pretty ugly in this debate, yelling at each other on social media. But one person that I saw that stood out to me was when I met her at the informational session last Thursday, was Dr. Johnson. She had dealt with abuse by some individuals and acted with aplomb. There, that being said, I was at the first BOE meeting, and I saw people were asking questions. So I did kind of put my name down to just ask questions. So I don't know if that's allowed in this session right now, but one thing I just wanted to ask was...
This is a public comment session, so, section, so if you'd like to ask questions, they'll be recorded into the record, and we can address them afterward.
Okay. Thank you. So my first question was, I saw on the state's Open Data website that the current JFK Stadium is listed as a C2-contaminated area of concern. So I was wondering, I didn't see in the budget, is there any money that's gonna be spent to remediate the contamination or protect the neighbors too of the project, as I guess the soil is disrupted and the contaminant is released?
This is a Q and A. So you can ask your questions, and we can address them afterwards.
Okay. I guess the second question was, does the Board of Education have anything about an operating budget for this high school that they can release once it's built in 2025? So this would be a forecast of operating expenses, not just the capital expense of building the project. And then my third and last question would just be about clarifying the comment or what was said, I think, at the first BOE meeting, that an Abbott district, or what's called a former Abbott district by the reform of the Abbott law in the mid-two thousands, if that... I guess there's what I saw online, but again, I don't know, so I was asking the question, and if you want to respond to it, sure, it's fine. But there's a two-pronged test to declassify an Abbott district that the Education Commissioner can make of the state, which is a government, governor-appointed role, and the Education and Commissioner evaluates based on relative poverty of the district and relative educational achievement. So I was just wondering, are we at risk by demonstrating anything that this is maybe, you know, compared to other districts that have more relative need per se, that have a less wealthy tax base than Hoboken, that the Abbott declassification could be put on the table at the state level? Those are my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a general comment in response, there is a referendum FAQ which addresses some of your questions on our district homepage. Go ahead.
I'd also just like to make a comment that, Mr. Cortuccio, I know that you have sent a number of emails, and we have answered a number of questions. The questions that you asked tonight were some of the ones that you asked over email, and they are being worked on and actually drafted to send back to you. But you make a point. Some of the things will be added to the FAQ since you have asked them, but the answers are forthcoming.
You know what? We're not gonna have a dialogue. I just wanted to make a comment that there is information out there that may address some of your questions. So, thank you.
Next speaker? Jackie Dow?
Hi, my name is Jackie Dow. I live at 1125 Maxwell Lane. I am the proud mom of an eighth grader who will be attending Hoboken High School next And I am also a strong supporter of this long-range facilities plan, and will be voting yes on January 25th. I wanted to come up here and thank the BOE and Superintendent Johnson for developing and presenting a plan for a new high school that has been exceptionally well thought out and conceptualized. Every detail and consideration has been... Every detail and consideration has been made to ensure that children of Hoboken receive a well-rounded education. And I say well-rounded because we know that education is not just about academics. Children learn in so many different ways. As a kid, I was a bit of a dreamer. Even though I took school seriously, I would often find my mind drifting to other things. It was hard at times for me to sit through class after class, learning about things that just seemed so esoteric and inapplicable to me at the time. But what did matter to me was my sport. For me, at the time, sports gave me an identity. This is who I am. This is what I'm good at. So when peer pressure around drugs, alcohol, sex, all those things that come up in the high school years, I wasn't swayed. I had a focus and a vision for myself. Here's what else I can tell you that sports did for me. It gave me confidence and it taught me that, that discipline and hard work pays off. It taught me that if I want something badly enough, I know I can attain it. It set a bar of success for myself. I knew what success felt like at a young age. And as a young adult, it was just translating those skills into becoming something, uh, successful in something else. Whether it's basketball, football, ice hockey, or swimming, this is what I wish for all kids, that they have something that gets them through until they're mature enough to understand the value and impact of their academic performance. My, my husband is a professor and I could tell you that over the 16 years we have been together, the conversation has shifted quite a bit. In the first half of our time together, he talked a lot about the importance of SAT prep in getting up SAT scores. But lately, he's been telling me that SAT scores are becoming less and less important in the college admissions process. But what isn't being de-emphasized are extracurriculars such as, um, joining a sport or a school club. I was too shy to join a school club. Sports was my ticket to success. So when we see a pool, a hockey rink, a football field in the new high school plans, think about a kid whose life will be set on a better path because we gave them an alternative way to become successful. I know some parents sending their kids to the high school have the means to pay for swim lessons or to join a hockey league, but many parents in the district cannot. Where does that leave those kids? Think of the road to success that we will be paving for kids with this new high school, which includes such amazing opportunities for all children. And yes, that includes sports. Thank you.
Manuel Rivera?
Good evening, Board members, and good evening all. Today I'm going to read my statement because people who are accusing people of rhetoric and yelling and screaming, I guess, took the turn today. But this is my statement. My name is Manuel Rivera, 529 Park Avenue, born in Hoboken, went to Hoboken High School, has family five to six generations in. So spare me the indignation. Okay? So, I rise and stand before you tonight to state for the record that I am not against children or against a school for our children and students. Nothing further from the truth, I would love, and I'm sure all residents present tonight and at home would want nothing better than a true high school. For, with the proper, sorry, with the proper number of classrooms and classroom sizes, with the amenities and special facilities that the Hoboken students can use in furthering their high school education and preparing them for their future endeavors, whatever they desire or for their education. But what I am not in favor of is a rushed referendum with the campaign of half-truths, misinformation, and misleading facts. And yes, I said misinformation and half-truths. No offense. Because of the lack... Pardon me. Pardon me, I'm sorry. Because of your lack of totalitarian information, factoring in the project's proposal of $240 million or perhaps more in, if you count interest or other factors unforeseen at this time, as well as the timing of the referendum, the lack of transparency and yes, communication in the early stages of this project. And now, the oligarchs of Hoboken and the special interests of these unknown forces of these oligarchs and those who lend themselves, yes, I said it, lend themselves to this gamble of our students' future. And if you can hear my voice, it's very emotional. Our children's future and the Hoboken taxpayer. They want to demean and discredit anyone who stands in opposition of this forced upon the residents referendum. No one opposed to this referendum is against children of Hoboken. I proudly am not. So shame, and yes, shame on anyone that this thwarts the facts and plays politics, political games, pardon me, with this very important and consequential issue for the residents of all of Hoboken. And that is my statement for the record. And again, it was politely said to all of you and to the people who were listening, and I thank you for listening this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Waiters? Susanna Cruz?
Hi, Susanna Cruz Hodge, 715 Madison Street. I'll keep it short tonight since I know we all want to go home. All I'd like to say to Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and the board is thank you for putting this thoughtful plan together and tirelessly advocating for our children. At last week's meeting, I heard someone say, the majority of people in this town don't have children. Why should we pay for your precious children? As if children, whether yours or not, aren't worth fighting for. Those who are against providing a state-of-the-art facility for kids, especially when, as it stands, 71% of the current student body population at our Hoboken High School lives before, before, below poverty line, are on the wrong side of the vote. Those students and those to come are the precious children we're fighting for. We owe it to them to fight for a state-of-the-art facility in which they can thrive. I read in an article today, this quote. It said, "In order for gentrification to be a shared opportunity for all, aggressive action is needed that views schools as neighborhood anchors." That's what this plan is, an aggressive action. This state-of-the-art school will be our neighborhood anchor. For those reasons and others, my family is voting yes.
Restico Tompkins? Restico?
Uh, we just need to take a quick break.
Michelle Daly?
Hi, Michelle Daly, 812 Grand Street, Hoboken. I wasn't going to speak tonight. Something happened last night that, you know, when you just get so angry, you're like rage shaking, um, that's what happened to me last night and I wanted to speak about it today and it's not really about the vote. I hope that's okay. Um, so what happened last night, it was a racist-laced stream of disgusting assumptions that, um, someone launched at me. Granted, we were having a pretty dumb social media rhetoric. But, uh, what he said to me was that a white person would be too afraid to send their kids to Hoboken High. He said that parents send their kids to private school to avoid diversity. And it was just this gross narrative perpetuated by ignorance. It's like a total slap in the face to public and private school parents. And most of all, it's a true slap in the face to all the kids in our district public schools, that they and their schools are somehow less than. And that some kids, for some inexplicable reason, left hanging in the air, should be feared. And it's a reminder that implicit and explicit racism lurks in our town and everywhere. And it tends to hide within those who don't have any firsthand experience to understand how wrong and hurtful they are. My kids have spent a collective 20 years in Hoboken District Public Schools so far. My son is proud to be a Hoboken High School Red Wing next fall. And I'm happy that he'll be getting a terrific education alongside his peers from every culture, race, ethnicity, religion, gender, orientation, ability, and belief. So this guy's response to that? I'll be sure to check in with you to see how he's doing in a year or two. And then he proceeded to belittle the award-winning performing arts program and those amazingly talented students of which my son is one. So the person with those despicable views is a leader for the no vote for the upcoming Hoboken High School referendum. But no, I don't think he speaks for all the no voters, thankfully. And yes, I do appreciate a lot of the views from no voters today because you're right, the divisiveness of this. It stinks and it's lousy and, um, I hate how personal it's become because I think at our core, we're all good people and we're all just, you know, doing the best we can. I happen to be a champion for the yes vote. But regardless of what side of the vote any of us are on, for Christ's sake, let's, uh, let's just keep believing in these kids and acknowledge what you don't know and seek to learn.
Please keep your mask on.
So regardless of whatever side of the vote we're on, please, let's be on the side of believing in these kids. And let's all keep doing the work to acknowledge what we don't know, to seek to learn more. Thank you.
Kim Church? Kim Church?
Okay, hi. My name is Kim Church. I live at 2811th Street. I've been living here for 11 years and I have two kids at Wallace Elementary School. And I have a dog named Jackie. So we have new buildings everywhere, money being thrown into renovations all over Hoboken, but yet the public schools remain untouched and our growth has not been addressed until finally this plan. Thank you, Board of Ed, and thank you, Dr. Johnson. You, you simply can't go wrong with investing in the schools in your community. This new high school will undoubtedly make Hoboken stronger. The students, the teachers, the families, the community as a whole will be stronger. Hoboken will finally be invested in and not a stop along the way to the suburbs, to the districts that actually invest in their public school system. Let's be one that supports its public school system. With a high school that is able to support a 21st century education, provide additional programs and a variety of extracurricular activities, our students will be more well-rounded human beings and they will be set up for success. This will benefit children on all economic levels here in Hoboken. This was touched upon a lot, I'm just going to echo it, about the sports facilities. I mean, come on, high schools have fields surrounding them in the suburbs for the sport facilities. We don't have fields, we have a building where it was thoughtfully planned to be inside of it. We need that for our kids. They need that for their self-esteem, as Jackie mentioned earlier. We live in a city, we need, it needs to go inside the school. Thank you, Board of Ed, again, for thinking that through. No plan is going to make anyone happy. No one wants their taxes to go up. Believe me, I am frugal, okay? But we, the children are our future. We can't get in the way of that, okay? It is unrealistic to have a plan that will make every single one of us happy. Taking out an ice skating rink is not going to make a big difference in your taxes. Bottom line, Dr. Johnson and the Board of Ed thoughtfully put together this plan. They, you asked them any questions, there's FAQs, there's been lots of meetings, it's on the site, it's all been thought through. We need to stop the trend of delaying progress in our public school system. We need to invest in it. Please vote yes.
Megan Dodd?
My name is Megan Dodd and I live on Madison Street in Hoboken and I have two children, a first grader and a third grader that attend Brant School. I think that a lot of people are overlooking that the Board of Ed has proposed a long-term facilities plan that will impact students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Making Demarest a fourth elementary school will allow many students to attend one school from pre-K to fifth grade. This will ease students' transition from pre-K to kindergarten, allow families that have children in both pre-K and K-5 to have their children attend the same school, and provide additional needed classrooms in the elementary schools. Making the current high, current high school a middle school will give the middle school students a facility that better supports their curriculum. And of course, I'm excited about the possibility that my children will be able to attend a state-of-the-art high school. My children are young, but so far, my son is athletic and my daughter is interested in the arts. And I want to send them to a high school that encourages and supports their extracurricular interests. This high school proposal allows every Hoboken student to pursue their interests and they should all have that opportunity, not just those whose parents can afford it. Thank you to Dr. Johnson and the Board of Ed for planning for the future for Hoboken's children. My husband and I will proudly vote yes.
Heather Seda?
I'm really short. Hi, I'm Heather Seda, 947 Bloomfield. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the board and to Dr. Johnson for everything that you guys do, all the time, not just now. Um, I am a McNair Academic graduate, back when it was called academic, class of 97. We had amazing academic programs and no facility. We had two floors in an abandoned elementary school. Our lockers had been fished out of a swamp. I know firsthand what it's like to have great academic programs and terrible facilities. We marched on the Board of Ed my freshman year. We finally got moved to an old high school the year after I graduated. I don't want this for our kids. I have two children, a fourth grader at Hoboken Charter School and a three-year-old at Calavro. I plan to send them both to Hoboken High School. I know I am not the only charter school parent who's going to send her kids to Hoboken High. Enrollment, enrollment is already at a peak crucial point. We need this school. The numbers speak for themselves. Enrollment is going to keep going up. Whether you like the process or not, this is long, long overdue and it's really unfair to make the children suffer because you felt left out. A lot of people will point to the county magnet schools and say, well, they'll absorb the overflow when we get to that point. We don't have that time and the county magnet schools do not educate every child the way that Hoboken High does. They are... They are for people who can compete in a very competitive admissions process. Not everybody is set up for that, not every child is going to want to go to Secaucus or to county prep. We need a good community school, and we need to invest in it. There is no wish way about it. Suburbs all over the place, they do it, they boast about their great schools, what are we doing here? I looked up a house on Zillow that is comparable to mine while I was sitting here in the audience in South Orange. The taxes are more than double what I pay. This school is not too extravagant. It is exactly what we need, it's exactly what our kids deserve. People talk about the academics, and they bring them into question. I've been a litigator for 17 years, I was blown away by the Hoboken Middle Schooler who spoke earlier today. Great teachers shape and enable these learners, and that's exactly what we have here. So do we want to give them the facilities that they need? Do we want to make sure they have a place to park? Do you want to circle for a half hour looking for a parking spot before you go into the most exhausting day-to-day job that you've ever had? I don't even want to get on the bus for 40 minutes, come on! Nobody wants this, and this is not how you retain great people to deal with our most precious asset. So listen, I've heard a lot of complaints. The proposed facilities are not supporting academics. So we have science labs, we have additional classrooms, what's non-academic about that? Oh, but you also don't want a nice field, you don't want a hockey rink. Why? Can our kids not play ice hockey unless they can get driven to Jersey City or Montclair? None of this really makes any sense. And also, as somebody else pointed out, the ice rink would knock, what, $3 off your tax bill, and we could probably all use it on like a Friday night, wouldn't that be fun? I'd really like that for my kids, I'd really like that for my family, and I'd really like that for this entire community. We've spent a lot of time paying lip service to educators this entire pandemic. How many of you have posted a meme on Facebook about how great teachers are? Okay, so let's put our money where our mouth is. Let's do what we can to retain great teachers, great administrators, and keep this going. Over time, this community has become very gentrified. Some, even many wealthy families, have chosen to send their kids to private school. They ignore our community schools. It's time we reverse that trend. Let our community now invest in our most valuable asset and make sure that we are telling our kids that we believe in them, we believe in their ability to achieve. I love this community, I believe in the basic goodness of all of us residents, so let's do this for our kids and let's do this for all kids. Vote yes.
Mike Evers?
My name is Michael Evers, 252 Second Street. I have no business affiliations with the Board of Education or the City of Hoboken. I did have a son who graduated from Hoboken High School a number of years ago, and it was a great experience for him. That said, I can't say I'm in favor of this plan, okay? But one thing I think, quite honestly, there's been a lot of attempts to win through intimidation tonight on both sides, which I do not think is okay and is not productive to the kind of clear-eyed debate that would get us better results, okay? But I think one thing we can all agree on is that turning Hoboken High School into a great school that people want to send their kids to would be a terrific goal. I'm not sure this plan gets us there, though. In some ways, Hoboken High School is great already. The theater program is recognized as being great. The football team is recognized as being great, and I don't think that should be minimized. And frankly, at least I know in my son's experience, that the humanity in the school, the kids he met, the teachers, I've had a chance to sample a lot of Hudson County schools, that was the nicest faculty I ever met. They were terrific, and they should be applauded for that. But the fact is that this plan, I don't think it gets us where you want to go, okay? A simple example, we just heard, the bottom line is, is this program gonna become so attractive that many of the people that have a choice, for financial reasons often, or because they're gonna move to stay here and go to this high school, are they gonna be attracted to it? And I'm not sure this plan gets us there, okay? What attracts people to schools, whether it be high-tech, I'm a high-tech parent as well, and other places, is the quality of program, be it academic programs or vocational programs. The reality is that Hoboken High School is not recognized for those things yet, okay? And I'm wondering why resources are not being spent, and I think resources need to be spent to improve the quality of these programs. You do that first, and then you build a high school. The woman who was up here a moment ago, the McNair graduate, described how terrible it was. High tech? I don't know what their new building looks like, their old building was horrifying, okay? But the fact is, a good program was built first, and I don't see why the resources aren't being devoted to that, okay? And you know, and some of those things do involve facilities, the whole point again and again being made that the teachers have no place to park, I mean, that seems, I can't believe that's a problem, I mean, not that it isn't a problem, but that that hasn't been solved a long time ago. There are things like that that matter because obviously, to build a great program, you need to bring in a great faculty. That may require, I know Tom up there on the Board remembers this as well, we helped found the Elysian Charter School together with other people. In order to make that happen, the unions needed to make accommodations, and they did, and that's one of the things that made it happen. But I just, all I see is a big building for a quarter billion dollars based on trends that may not follow through. I mean, we just heard that last year we had 160-something high school kids, and this year we can count on 140 for the next class. That doesn't sound like the right trend. So I would encourage people not to support this, to vote no on this, not because they don't like children, or don't think that having great schools in Hoboken is a worthy goal, but I don't really think this, you're doing it, oh, this is a public forum, buttocks backwards, okay? You build the program, and then you build the facility to accommodate it. In my private life, I'm a consultant, I work with charities mostly that help poor people. And what they do is they build programs, and then you wind up building a facility to house it after you have something to put there. Now, 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 this is a lot of money to be spent. And frankly, Hoboken has been famous, for as long as I've been in Hoboken, for having one of the highest per-student expenditures of any school district in the state, okay? And I'm not saying that is a bad thing, that's a good thing, but I'm not really sure that, I mean, with that amount of money, I would like to see more outstanding, amazing programs like the theater program, okay? emanating out of these schools, and I don't see them. If I'm ignorant, happy to be educated, but I don't see them. And the question is therefore, are we spending the money properly? And that question can also be asked to this quarter-billion-dollar high school. If you need a middle school or you need a new elementary school, build one, okay? But this seems a distraction from getting down to what's it gonna take to put great programs in.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for your talk.
Donna Antonucci?
I would, actually, I just want to say one thing. I would refer you, sir, to our district homepage, the Program of Studies for Hoboken High School. I just wanted to refer you to our district homepage. We have the Hoboken High School Program of Studies, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. Check it out. Okay. Thank you. Check out our FAQ, that includes the programs for the new high school. Thank you.
So my name is Dot Antonucci, I live at 4029th Street here in Hoboken, I've been here for 25 years. I'm gonna say a few things that really have already been said, but I've been saying this from the beginning. My issue with this project is really around the transparency. As noted, as we found out during the process, you've really been working on this plan since 2019. There's really no reason why you couldn't have brought in the public long before this. I find it, I do find it nefarious that this was introduced to the public after the election. You know, some people talk about how you should trust the Board. You could have told us that you were working on this, and that might have actually changed this election, who people voted for. It was actually also introduced after Thanksgiving, in the vortex between Thanksgiving and the holidays, and it's $240 million. I am not anti-children, I'm not anti-education. I am a resident, a long-term resident, I'm a constituent, I'm a voter, and I believe that this is a huge decision that obviously has consequences for 30 years, so why are we trying to rush this in really six weeks that this is being done? Andrew, Mr. Cartucci, brought up the whole point about asking about the operating budget. That question was actually asked at the very first meeting, and it's been asked repeatedly at every single info session. The Board, the superintendent, have made it very clear that none of these meetings are hearings, and that's primarily my issue, is that the Board, the info sessions, no one's accountable. At the info sessions, the questions are not recorded, not all of them, you could be evasive about the answer, you're sitting there saying that you didn't, you're trying to address the operating budget. Well, when are you gonna publish it? Is it gonna be in time for the vote, are people gonna have an opportunity to find it and read it? And, you know, what if they have a question about it? There's no time for that. That's actually a very good example. That was asked on the first, in the December meeting. So you've made it very clear that there's no back and forth. I also want to say that, you know, under Mayor Dorn Zimmer, we established a process where the public had input into these big projects, and for all the parks, all the flood remediation, that process has been adhered to. And Leo Pellegrini, the head of Parks and Rec, will tell you that the public always comes up with something that the administration did not, always. On the Viaduct, which was a county project, the city found out about it when they wanted to close the roads under it and start the project. They had bought all the materials because they passed that in the dark of night because of low turnout for these things. We had a meeting because of public insistence, and people were asking, "Why are we putting a four-lane road in between two two-lane roads? Why are we gonna make people speed up to slow down?" The public wanted a larger sidewalk, they wanted it raised, kind of like what's on the Brooklyn Bridge. They couldn't do it because they already bought all the materials and they were about to start the project. We still have cars that jump the sidewalk and kill people. And you know what? They hired a vendor, a traffic study vendor, who works primarily in the suburbs. It was blessed by the state, an approved vendor, which they had to use, and they think about it very differently. How do we get cars from point A to point B? I'm using that as an example. I don't know because we don't have all the questions answered, questions on the Board side have been put up selectively, there's no recording of what's been asked and how it's been answered, and that's what the issue is, the lack of transparency in this project. I wanted to come here and ask you, I know it's ridiculous, but it's more of a rhetorical question, that you take this, that you somehow vote this down, and you don't do this, because you know what? I don't want to see you have to wait a year. I don't. This really should be on the November ballot. That's when we'll have that 36% of voter turnout. We'll have 12, 13, 14, 15,000 people that'll actually vote on this. A vote in January, an obscure date, in the winter, during a pandemic, you know, a special election, is gonna have 1,200 people. That's historically what a special election, maybe because of the vitriol on social media, there might be some more, but it will be low voter turnout. And this is, this is a measure for the entire town. Yes, the parents and the kids, but everybody, the tenants, the owners, everybody. And you should be interested in public input. So vote no and have hearings.
Carol Hurd? Carol Hurd? Brian Angley? Chris Clark?
Chris Clark, 518 Bloomfield. I have four children in the district. I don't really have any notes, and I need glasses, but I'm not sure they're gonna help. So much was said tonight. I wanted to reflect a little bit on some of the things that were said with regard, I think specifically to start with the word transparency, okay? And you guys have been transparent by giving access directly to vendors, directly to have set up meetings and all that, and a lot of times, the people that accuse you, okay, it's a classic sort of political thing, accuse you of lack of transparency, they're not being transparent. And so what I find is that the people that have reams of questions, and I have this and all that, that to be transparent, they're not just, say, you know, a father of a young child, but they are an aspiring politician, or they are a political operative, or they are a fake Republican or something like that. So transparency is very, very important, and it shouldn't be lost on anybody that people standing up here, okay, either have, might have some sort of beef and some sort of, that's what my daughter calls it, but, you know, are, have hate or anger? I don't know. Or have, really need a little bit more to do. But I think you guys have been transparent, and I think some of the people asking questions up here are anything but transparent, okay? With regard to process, this is another word that's thrown out, you didn't give a process. And I think I want to talk that the process of a new high school has been going on for 25 years. I've lived here 32 years, 25 years, and what I've gleaned from this is that obfuscation is important. Never solve the problem so that when an election rolls down, you can run on the problem. And that's what's gone on here for 25 years. For as long as I can remember, any mayor election, "Oh no, this guy's gotta deal with academy, they're gonna put the thing here, and it's gonna be a thing." I'm like, "Really? Is that really true?" And sure enough, as soon as the election's over, boom, the thing evaporates. And I think what's happened here, which is amazing, is finally, we have a superintendent with CEO timber, someone with executive prowess. We also have a Board, a Board with an epic number of children in the district. Unbelievable! So when I speak to councilpeople, and they show sort of disregard for the process or transparency, they're the ones who are not being transparent, they're the ones who have participated in a failed process of 25 years of delay and obfuscation to the point now we almost have an emergency, okay? People talk about state-of-the-art like it's a dirty word, like it's a dirty word. It is 2025 that this facility will be finished. It is 2022 right now. It should be state-of-the-art. The rate of, the second derivative rate of change, I brought this up before with regard to technology since about 2008, has been astounding, astounding. For those of us that grew up in rows of seats, learning, that is over. My wife's a high school math teacher, AP Statistics. They are collaborative, they work in groups, you need space for that. This is like the equivalent of saying, in Hoboken, back in the day, we had a boarding house. There were nine rooms, we had nine bedrooms. And then you buy the place, and you're like, "Well, why? You could have nine bedrooms here." And they're like, "Where the hell are you gonna eat? Where are you gonna sit and watch TV?" So the use of space is important. Athletics are critical to a parent in a city. I don't want you on your phone. I want you, I want to force you to go play a sport. When people talk about the numbers and the growth numbers, I don't need to know the numbers from the DOE of New Jersey. I know the numbers. The middle school this year had basketball tryouts for boys. 47 kids tried out. Good lord, you can't put 47 kids on a team. I don't need to go to the DOE for that. I know what's behind it because I'm involved. Don't wait to get involved. Don't ask to be involved. Get yourself involved, and when you're not, and when you're surprised, it's because you're not paying attention. You're impetuous, arrogant, narcissistic, and you're really not about children because a vote no on this is gonna force children to be bused to Secaucus, Newark, or Weehawken. To vote no on this...
Time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Vote yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rasko Tomin, I live at 800 Jackson Street. I'm here to make a statement regarding a new high school proposal. I'm here to make a statement regarding a new high school proposal. And I would like to start by describing what we as a district currently have in terms of facilities. So we have three buildings that are over 100 years old, and we have two that are 50-plus years old. I'm a school district parent of two children. When my older son, who is freshman now, attended Brandt, that school hosted pre-K program because there were not enough kids for the building to be used as elementary school. Today, Brandt is used at full capacity, and so is Connors. That talks about enrollment numbers. People can, you know, yell here about whether enrollment is real or not. Wallace is almost at capacity, and it's lacking in many ways. There's no library. Kindergarten programs run out of the trailer, out of the back of the school. Class sizes in schools are up from average 15 to 17 to 20-plus kids. Current middle school is not suitable. It lacks normal-sized gym and cafeteria. Lunch gets staggered. My son went to the school and he was complaining, Dad, they make him eat lunch at 10:30 in the morning. Kids are cramped. So I have heard so many comments and statements that basically boiled down to Hoboken School District is horrible, and therefore we should not be building a new school. Even if those comments were true, and they're not, I don't follow the logic of those arguments. Is the logic, our school system is bad, so let's just keep it that way? Let's keep kids in alt and outdated buildings and facilities? And then see just what happens with the future of our education? Let's not give teachers the tools that they need and hope for the best? Let's keep existing facilities until they're 200 years old? I mean, is that the plan for people that are opposing this? Well, the district has plenty of room for progress. We have seen huge, huge improvements over past six or seven years. So if you don't like this project for some reason, you can make civilized argument against it. You can go vote against it. But please do not disparage and deride the progress that this Board of Education, Dr. Johnson, and Hoboken Public School Teachers, along with our kids, have made over the years. It is wrong and it's unacceptable. In terms of transparency complaints, I heard a lot of people complain about, well, you guys have been working for two years, you didn't let us know. I mean, that's not how the process works, folks. Okay? And it's just not, right? So I believe that this board did their job. They envisioned the project, they think, and they believe it's right for our town for now and for the future. They're now putting this high school proposal, it's very specific, well-defined project in front of the voters as a single-issue referendum question. All right? We're talking about, we're not able to talk about it. We've been talking about it here for two hours now. You can talk about it on Monday. People talk on social media. There were six or seven presentations. So I don't get that comment, right? So the fact that this is put up in front of voters in January, we can have a difference of opinion. I think it's a good issue because then it's a single issue. You don't get different political fractions trying to call out the issue. You don't get, you know, issue, people maybe not paying attention because there's a lot of things going on, et cetera. So I think that's a positive thing, and I think this makes this process very open and transparent. In terms of costs, the opponents are saying it's too expensive because $241 million is a huge number, right? However, just because the number seems high doesn't mean that it's unrealistic or unjustified for this type of a project, right? If you ask someone who lives in a less expensive part of our country, how do they feel about spending half a million dollars to purchase 900-square-foot, one-bedroom apartment? They're going to say, that's crazy, it's expensive, can't be right. Well, that's reality in Hoboken, right? In terms of tax impact, again, opposition's throwing out 20% increase, which is totally false because portion of the tax bill that's used to fund schools would increase 20%, rest of the tax bill will go 6%. I'm going to try to speed up. In terms of design, saying it's a classroom attached to a sports complex, it's a cute soundbite, but doesn't invalidate the project. We need facilities where our kids and youth can go and play sports and, you know, be physically active. And arguing for postponing a project potentially kills this project, right? I'm just going to wrap up, five seconds. Because whole generation of our kids, their whole entire high school experience would be lost if we delayed this another four years. So I'd like to ask.
Maureen Sullivan. Maureen Sullivan. Maureen Sullivan?
Hi, my name is Maureen Sullivan. I live at 213 Fourteenth Street. Listening to what everybody said, I had various reactions and I wanted to respond to everything, but I'll just make a few points. I, I come here today representing the older folks in town. There aren't many of us here. It wasn't that long ago that I was, you know, part of the stroller brigade, push my stroller, my two kids, to Wallace, and then drove them to Connors. It seems like it goes by in a flash, and it does. You think that you represent everybody. I am the moms. I am, I have my kids in school here. I'm the most important person. That's what comes across. And it's hard not to feel that way. But I'm telling you, 20 years on, when your kids are out of school, and they're in their twenties now, and they'd like to live in Hoboken. They don't want to live in their old bedroom or squeezed into whatever forever. They'd like to live in Hoboken. But of course, there are a lot of people saying, who cares? $77 a month, that's like sushi dinner for me and my hubby. Come on, get over it. It's not that much money. Well, a lot of people who went to Hoboken High can't afford to live in Hoboken. So in a way, they're consigned. You'll be a Section 8 person forever. You'll be living in the Housing Authority forever. Because, heck, we need a really, really, really big school with a really, really, really big price tag. We need it. We did it for you. We did it for you, kids. We did it for you. And that's unfair. And one other thing that comes up, you know, we talk about voting rights. This happened so fast. You may have all been thinking about it a long time, but nobody else was. You didn't give them that opportunity. You didn't trust anybody in this town to be in on the plan. So now they're finding out about it. I don't know how many people I've talked to have said, okay, where do I register to vote? Young people, young people who maybe went to Hoboken High. Oh, sorry, that day's passed. Two weeks or so after we let you know about this, the date to register to vote had already passed. So if you say you're in favor of voting rights, look inward. It's also true that you can't. It's also true that you notice a lot of people aren't here, older people, that every one of these hearings, meetings, whatever you want to call them, has been at night, in the dark, middle of the winter, pandemic. Every one of them could have done it during the summer, could have done it, you know, could have had during the school, you know, the schools are open now during the day, they're available now, but that wasn't done. So there's going to be one Zoom meeting, one, in this day of Zoom, there's one Zoom meeting. And we know a lot of people can't even figure that out. I'm also going to, you know, there's a lot of kind of resentment towards people who don't have kids. Like, you don't have kids. You've never even been in our school. It's a privilege to have children. Not everybody gets that privilege. A lot of these people here who have spoken out and are no voters have been working for decades on things in the city that everyone appreciates. Open waterfront, a hospital in town. Duh. You know, water, you know, mitigation system for flooding. A lot of the stuff they've been working on when you were all in junior high school. So please, when you talk about respect, respect for people who have done a lot for Hoboken. You love Hoboken, you want to live in Hoboken. Well, you know who made it happen? A lot of these, well, sorry, they've all left, but I'll tell them what I said. Rent control, various issues that they've worked dang hard on and gone to a million city council meetings and spoken up. So please, the idea that people don't know about it, you don't know what's going on here. I ran for the school board in 2008. One of the people I ran against is now up on federal corruption charges. I ran the following year and won. That fellow I ran against spent time in federal prison recently on corruption and fraud charges. No Board of Ed is perfect. And this Board of Ed has shown itself to be, in a different way, I hate to use this word, and I know I'll be slammed for it, corrupt. I have asked, I sent an email to the number, to the address, you know, proposed Hoboken High email address, saying, what is the official count for this school year? Not last year, not the one before, not what's on the DOE website. This current year, how many kids go to school here now, broken down by grade? No response to my email to this vaunted, you know, send your questions here. Not even a out-of-office response.
Time, thank you, thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
On Thursday, I asked Ms. Good, can I get those numbers? And one second. I asked Ms. Good.
Your five minutes is up.
I know. The gentleman before me asked for five more seconds, so let me just ask.
And he didn't get it.
Ms. Good told me she would email me these. I have emailed her twice since Thursday.
Thank you for your comment.
I don't even get a response. So if you think you're not corrupt, tell me how you're not. That's corruption.
Thank you.
Alex Garcia, and excuse me, Ms. Antonucci. Ms. Antonucci.
Ms. Antonucci's already spoken now.
I didn't get any emails from her.
Alex Garcia, Six in Washington. First off, I'd really like to see the fact that all the neighbors are gone, basically.
Sir, can you direct your comments to?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I want to say basically is I want to thank all the people who voted yes for staying till late. And the majority of people who are voting no, I have left right now. But it's okay. Listen, all I have to say, while I've been hearing, all these neighbors are the majority of people who have basically no kids or have been here 20 to 25 years already. They don't understand the necessity of a new high school or an upgrade of a middle school. This is coming from an alumni of class of 93 Hoboken High School, who graduated in class was over 400 people. I was the first class in Hoboken High School to pass the HSBT exam 100% my junior year in high school. Why? Because we had the tools and computers at the time to be successful and the technology at the time. Because of it, I went to Rutgers University in New Brunswick, college engineering. So yes, we need a new high school for the 21st century for our kids nowadays. The benefits of a new high school, state of the art, school, technology, for the facility for the school. They, the need of a growing population of kids. More kids are staying on Hoboken. I have four kids in Hoboken. I have four kids. Okay? This lady over here said before, I mean, nobody has four kids.
Mr. Garcia. Can you direct your comments to the board?
The population is increasing now since the late 90s. When I graduated in 93, my class was 400 people. I get it that nowadays, basically, the classes have been small, but now it's growing, thanks to the God. And with that being said, we need the school, we need the space. We need that new, the new state-of-the-art facility for the kids. It will prevent families from moving to the suburbs. Parents who would consider going to the charter schools, which in result will increase student enrollment. These are parents, they're parents sending their kids to Summit High School for hockey and fencing. Why? Because Hoboken High School does not have the facility. So yes, sports does play a role in kids staying in Hoboken. I saw them myself. I took the transit, going to work when I was working in Florin Park. There's high school kids taking the train to Summit, to Summit. Those kids could be coming and staying here in Hoboken and increase enrollment. Okay? Who says sports don't play a role? I was a computer savvy kid who played football when we were National Conference Group Four, which states, which states that basically, the status depends on, I mean, which basically is, what I'm trying to say is, the enrollment of a school states the status of a school conference. Back in the days when we were Group Four, we were Group Four because the enrollment, the size of the school, size of the kids enrolled in school. I'm not sure you guys are familiar with it, but we need that. Regarding the middle school, my kids transferred from Calabro to Brandt, which I was highly disappointed because Calabro Elementary was, was a, was a state-of-the-art equipment, and the kids moved to a, the kids move grade to grade together. Now the middle school has the opportunity to get an upgraded school from the current Brandt, Wallace and Connors. Brandt staff has done an incredible job with the leadership of the principal, Barletts. In conclusion, I will say this, the Board of Ed, communication is lacking. There is, there is, this is a redo of Calabro Elementary propaganda. But at the end of the day, the Hoboken High School is needed. I say vote yes on January 25th, or hold the alamada. Thank you.
Maloney, that's the last one.
That's it? Okay, well, thank you all. That concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.